Everybody, thanks for coming. We got another Zoom meeting. Here at the town hall based on the governor's executive orders. I don't see any time soon where these are going to be changing, so. Let's call the regular meeting to order at six thirty-three. And the first item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on May 12, 2020.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes on the May 12, 2020 meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda is a COVID-19 update from our cred director Scott Martinson and his compatriot Sherry Carlson.
Yeah, hi. Am I coming in clear?
Yeah, so far so good.
Good bandwidth.
It's kind of delayed, so just hold up your finger if I'm not. Yeah, it's been busy with cases still increasing. Fortunately, Deep Rivers maintained a good posture during all of this. We're seeing a rapid uptick in nursing home cases at Apple Rehab in Old Saybrook. So we're monitoring that closely. A lot of good things.
Oh, shoot.
Uh-oh.
Yep.
Yeah.
Send up the smoke signal.
We lost you, Scott. Shoot.
Sherry, you're on. Yeah, he's really froze up.
Send him a chat message.
Yeah. I think he got off and he'll probably try to get back on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yep, he's gone.
He's gone. Yep.
All right, let's get him in here. Chat, nope, get out of there, get out of there. Come on, man.
Nice roses, Lori.
Thank you.
Were you so special?
Her thirty-sixth wedding anniversary, and she's here with us.
Oh, wow. Happy anniversary.
She's gonna go to another meeting later. That's her dedication.
Yeah.
I went to my other connection. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's great, Scott. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, so I heard probably nothing, but Deep Rivers maintained. During this, no active community transmission that we've seen, so that's great for the community. We're seeing a big uptick in the nursing homes, specifically Apple Rehab. Has up to, what's our total case count now, Sherry, as of today? About thirty-six?
Thirty-eight. I just confirmed another one, so yeah.
And that's at Apple Rehab?
That's at Apple Rehab, yeah. So that's part of those, most of those tests were part of the National Guard testing strategy. Some of those tests done a little bit before that, so, you know, we'll keep an eye on that. But four deaths pretty quick is pretty concerning, so we did have an additional death at Aaron Manor the other day. So we're looking, total death counts at twenty now, and we're about two hundred cases district-wide. You can see there's still a lot happening. I mean, yeah, just turn the news up.
Yeah.
We lost him again.
That gets kind of a long way to go, but, you know, there's been some positive steps. And the food service establishments that have opened up have really done a good job for the most part, so kudos to a lot of them.
Yeah, thank you for your help with that. That's, um, that was a real, uh, real quick effort, and they're very much appreciated. Now, I noticed, and I put in my, you know, the governor announced CVS has the new, um, new testing. Can you run us through a little bit? I'm curious. People are asking me, and I don't know for sure. At the CVS testing, do you get your, how soon do the results come back?
Usually, um, usually they're getting them that night. Sometimes they're getting them before they drive off. But, um, they may get them then, but they always get a call that night.
Okay, and now our closest open testing is East Lime and Guilford?
East Lime and Guilford, yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, great.
And that's if you meet all the criteria. You can't just, as a general public, walk in without meeting the criteria, correct?
Right, you have to go onto the CVS website and answer the criteria.
So you do need a reservation?
Yep.
Okay.
You would just have to kind of say you have a headache or a fever.
Well, I was gonna say I'm over sixty years old, like.
Yeah, you know, really, I mean, at this point.
My grand, my mother that's over eighty, she's eighty-eight years old, and that didn't qualify.
You could say you're up, the word first.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, that was really my question is what I've been getting asked is where's the closest testing and how fast can you get the results? You know, you know what? I wouldn't mind ask, also ask you, Sherry and Scott, if you would, um, walk us through the process. If you, not if you, not if you yourself are exhibiting any symptoms or anything, but if you find yourself exposed to someone who either has tested positive, let's just go with someone who's tested positive. What should you do?
That's pretty complex, but Sherry can define it pretty, pretty intelligently and quickly. Go ahead, Sherry.
Well, if you're exposed to somebody, um, then from the, the date that you were last exposed to them, you have to self-isolate for fourteen days. If you live with the person and you make no effort to, um, separate yourself from the, the positive person for the ten days that they are infectious, then your fourteen days does not start till the ten days of the infected person ends. So you're, if you make no effort to separate from the person you live with, it is twenty-four days. Because the person can spread the disease those ten days, and you can become positive fourteen days from each of those days. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. So it's twenty-four days.
If you don't separate at all.
Right.
Yeah.
And what about a negative test involved with that? If I don't want to sit home those twenty-four days, can I go to CVS, get a negative test, and that's that?
That's a good question.
No, because if you get a negative test on this day and then you separate from that person, but you can't, you, you still have fourteen more, you still have, from the ti, your last exposure, you still have fourteen days to convert from negative to positive because of that one exposure.
Right. Okay, so, so if you, if, if, let's say, one week after that exposure, you go and get a test and it's negative, you still have another week to go.
You got a chance.
You still have seven more days to convert from that last exposure.
Okay. Okay.
There could be no one left to work.
Well. That's a long time, you know, to go out to be at work.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, that's why.
Vacation and sick days and all that other stuff.
So at least if you can separate by floor, um, and, you know, and not be in, and just so you know, a, a close contact exposure is within six feet for fifteen to twenty minutes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So if you can separate by floor and, you know, um, that you can avoid that twenty-four days, but you have to make an effort to separate, like, I just had a parent had a child. I have to keep the baby out of daycare for twenty-four days because there's no way that mother cannot be next to the baby, the nine-month-old for, you know, those ten days.
Yep.
We're also gonna see the, another spike. Um, the other two nursing homes in our district are being tested. Their point prevalent testing is due this week as well, so.
Okay. So those are, those are gonna be interesting, and I don't think, I haven't seen anything nationwide that actually is separating out nursing homes or facilities similar to nursing homes, um, from the general population, uh, to, to really see. Like, like Deep River is doing terrific, um, but Chester's numbers are so skewed because of Aaron Manor. And really, it's not outside of Aaron Manor.
Yeah.
With that, they'd be right with us as far as, they'd probably be a little lower than us. So that's a concern for me anyway, is just to try and, uh, try and separate those. People can understand and remember that, that we are still doing really well. Even though that we might see, we might see a big uptick in numbers right now from the testing, the new testing in these facilities that you're talking about. I'm more concerned about what kind of thing, what kind of results we see in a few, few days or maybe a week from now after the reopening and folks going to the beaches and all that kind of things.
Yeah, me too.
Yep.
I took a wrong.
Yeah, like, like you watch a little bit of Georgia. I mean, I, from what I can tell, where we stand now, I don't draw from any positives that's happened.
Right.
A lot of these reopenings, you know what I'm saying? So, and, and Georgia was different than Connecticut. We're a much different animal, you know? Our numbers might be a lot worse than Georgia's with reopening. So it's hard to really gauge state to state per se, but.
Right.
I think, and for a long ride with that, for sure. We'll see what happens, though.
I think so, but I think by and large, I think the governor's reopening plan is, is pretty well thought out. It's, it's a slow, slower than, slower than a lot of folks would like, slower than I would like when it comes to my shops and stuff like that, but, but not.
Better than other states.
But too fast when it comes to just thinking about, you know, what are we gonna do?
Just a little bit of driving I did around on the weekend, on the nice days, Route One in Saybrook, the Monkey Farm and, um, Donny Ads and TJ's and all that, I, I kind of expected them to be jammed with people, but every time I went by in the noonish hour, they weren't. And, and, you know, people like, just because you can, I think a lot of people with common sense are saying no. On the other, on the other hand, I heard that there was a party on Kelsey Hill yesterday where there were twenty cars. So, um, you know, it's, most people are using common sense and good judgment, and then there's other people that just, you know, whatever, so.
But Bill Seafood was rocking yesterday. I drove by Bill Seafood around four thirty.
I didn't get down there, really.
And the deck, the deck was packed, the tent was packed, and there was a line standing waiting to get in.
Wow.
I was on four thirty, quarter to five, so.
Sure would like a lobster roll, but.
Go to Liv's, go to Liv's in Old Saybrook to go.
There you go. There you go.
I got a connection that'll deliver lobsters to your house for you.
Okay. Um, all right, well, um, Scott, Sherry, anybody have any other questions for them? Any of the public have any questions for them?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for coming and sharing again with us, and for all the work that you're doing. It's, it's very much appreciated.
We'll be in touch. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, bye now. Okay, I, now I just gotta, my internet is unstable, so. Just making a note, and let's try to go to the next item on the agenda is discussing possible action on the tax anticipation note. Um, I sent you guys the resolution that was written up for us. This is something that, uh, you know, the duration of this virus and the impact that that's gonna have on our state and on our local revenue sources is unknown. We just don't know. And I think it's prudent, and I think it's conservative for us to, to think about join, joining many of the towns around the state with, with setting up and arranging to have an additional source, if necessary, to fund, um, to fund some of the, some of our, our obligations. You know, we generally get, and these are, these are not exact numbers, but they're pretty close numbers. Um, we're, we're around fifty percent of our revenue comes in July and August. And we usually spend a little over one-third of our, um, of our budget by the end of September. So, you know, these, these first few months, uh, plus combined with the, um, the tax, uh, executive order that allowed for us to, uh, to give people a, really a ninety-day break on paying their taxes with a very low interest rate. It's got me concerned that, that we're going to have some, some, uh, delay in collection, collecting our, our revenue in the beginning of, in the beginning of the season between July and August. I think, I think we might. What, what I'm suggesting does not, does not mean an increase in spending. It's really, it, it needs to be repaid in the next fiscal year. It, it anticipates that we will collect our taxes, um, but that we are, um, but we probably will see a delay in it. We do not have the reserve funds to cover that, that, uh, you know, a third of our costs in September, by September.
So how long, how long are we gonna take the note out for Angus?
The note needs, it, it's required to be repaid in one year, in the fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one.
No prepayment penalties or anything like that?
No, no, we could pay it if, if, if we, if we see that we're having a delay in, in collections on, uh, you know, July twentieth, um, and we borrow the, we borrow all of it. We'll, um, and we don't have to borrow it all at once. We borrow it as we need it.
Okay.
But if we, if we see that we're having a delay in there and we, and we need some funds, we make that borrow. And then everything comes in in September and we, and we collect back to our, you know, to our, for the percentage of taxes that are normally collected, we can pay back what we borrowed immediately and then save on interest and save on all that. So it's, um, I, I think it's, it's really just a measure to, uh, to ensure that we're able to meet our obligations.
A little buffer.
Pardon?
It's a little buffer, a little security.
Yep, and we need to be prepared.
Doesn't, doesn't cost, you know, it's not increasing our spending. It doesn't give, it doesn't give us an ability to spend any more money than we already have budgeted. It just gives us an ability to, to make the payments that we need to make to the schools and to all those other things.
Keep the town running.
So, um, I have a resolution. I don't think I want to read the whole resolution, so if you guys are okay with it, I'm just going to read the, the first, the, the, basically the introduction to it.
Okay.
And then I'll, I'll include the whole resolution in the, in the minutes.
Okay.
It'll be attached to it. But it, it's, uh, the Town of Deep River Board of Selectmen, uh, resolution authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed four million dollars to pay the town's expenses and obligations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty. And then it goes on for, for two pages, as you've seen. What this, what this does, we'll go from here, if, if you guys are okay with this and we approve this, we'll go to the Board of, Board of Finance meeting tonight, and, uh, and, and if they also agree, that'll move this to, um, back to us to set a town meeting. I don't, I don't have any interest in doing anything with it until July first. What I'd like to do is, is maybe schedule a town meeting, uh, to follow our July, um, selectmen's meeting. We can, uh, and if we can have, if we can have a town meeting at that point, we will. If we can't, we can, um, you know, but we can advertise it, we can do all the postings that we need to do and be ready to move forward with this. And even that, even at that town meeting, the authorization to do this borrowed does not mean that we will do the borrow. We will only do this borrow if Tom, our treasurer, and I recognize that we have a need for it, and I expect that we will come back and let you and Board of Finance know that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Good.
So.
I make a motion that we, uh, adopt that res, the resolution as you verbally said in the, the rest of the, the rest of the written motion for the TAN tax anticipation.
I'll second it.
The only, only discussion I'd have on that is again, just to reiterate what you said, Angus, is that this isn't something that Deep Rivers doing alone. You know, many communities, surrounding communities and all that are doing it. It's not something that, that we are stepping out and doing on our own. And anybody that's listening to this, this is something that we need to do. Other towns, probably most towns are, are, if they haven't done it, they're thinking about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, and like I said, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's, it does not mean that we're spending any more money. We're.
Correct.
It's really just to ensure that we can spend the money that we've budgeted to spend.
Yep.
Um, okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the, uh, audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Audience and citizens, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Angus, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Lori.
If God forbid, the government decides to close the state again because we have a massive outbreak again, can we increase that amount to cover more months?
No.
Looked at it.
We would have to go back, we would have to go back to another resolution.
Another resolution, but that's something that's.
Oh, yeah, but that's.
God forbid.
That'll be difficult to, you know, I, I can't, I don't foresee that, and it'll be difficult to, for me to foresee that. I, I don't think it's a, I don't think it makes any good sense to take a tax anticipation note out, um, late in the year because you have to pay it back in the fiscal year that it's taken out.
Right.
Obligated to pay it with tax, with tax revenue. So, um, but, you know, I think that we're doing a good job in trying to anticipate where the state's going to be, um, and where we're going to be. And we'll just have to pay attention, you know, we'll see, you know. I think the reopening is, is at least the phases that I've seen, the, the two phases that have some real definition to them are moving us towards being open and, and getting people back to work. And, uh, and I think that's, that's the biggest obstacle to paying your taxes is to having a paycheck.
Correct.
And being, and, and knowing that you have a job to go back to, you know, uh, so. I, I, I think if we, we'll, we'll, obviously, we're gonna keep looking ahead as much as we can to, to see if something like that might come. But, um, I don't have an answer for you right now because I hadn't really thought that what's gonna happen in September, October with the state money. You know, that, that is, that is a concern about what are, what, what's gonna happen with the state funds. But that, um, would not, if, if the state cuts their, uh, let's say the state cuts ECS money, that would be the biggest one that would hurt us the most. Um, if they cut that back, we, we would have to borrow that in a different manner because that money is a supplement to our taxes.
Right.
So we can't collect enough taxes at the, at the tax rate that we have now to, to offset that. You know, so we would have to raise that money either by raising taxes in the middle of the year, which I, I don't even know how to do. Or, uh, or borrowing to get us through the year. But we'll, we'll approach that if it gets here, and I think the state is, um, I think the state's working pretty hard to make sure that they're able to. I think I'm more concerned about federal monies coming in to help the states than I am about the state cutting what they have.
Now, did you mean to say July meeting or June meeting?
July meeting, sorry. If I said June, I meant.
You said July, but I was meant to say.
We'll meet it, no, we, we won't know anything until we get into July, and I think the first, our first meeting will have an indication of what's happening. And we'll, we'll also be in a good position to, uh, to get ourselves, hopefully, have, hopefully have an in-person town meeting. If not, then we'll do it online.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got one thing. I put my, put my citizen hat on, and then I'll put my selectman hat on. As, as you know, you guys know, everybody knows where I live. We have a neighbor next door, Haynes Materials, um, that within the last year has, has changed their processing plant over there from a water-based processing to dry-based. And, um, we as residential neighbors have had our house doused with dust and dirt a couple of times this year already in the dry spells. And I went over there and complained, and before I even went in, he says, I know why you're here. And, um, and that hasn't been rectified, and I, you know, I don't know the regulations, but I gotta believe that there's a dust, a dust and dirt remediation that's required both on the, the roads going in and out and their, in their own to keep the dust down, and now they have this plant that's in dry conditions is really cranking out a lot of dirt and dust. And then I'll put my selectmen's hat on, and I drove by the other day, and the wind was shifting so that that cloud of dust was flying over Plattewood Park. And that affects our ability, our taxpayers and our residents to be able to use that without, I mean, we're all supposed to be wearing masks, but you shouldn't have to wear a mask to go there because of dust and, and whatnot that's coming from Haynes. And I, and I, and I feel bad, you know, I understand that Haynes supplies residence and commercial, and the Town of Deep River was supplies, and, and we, we do our fireworks with them during Deep River Day and, and whenever that happens to be. So it, it, that's, it's a tough, tough call, but I think, um, and I, I, I'm guessing that they did it for twofold. One is I think their machine over there was getting tired, but I also think that for years and years and years and years, whenever we had a heavy rain, when they were using the water through the stream over there, it would end up in the, what I call the fishing pond. The pond is closest to my driveway. Now that they're, they're running dry, they don't have the water supply, the water demand and the water, um, contamination or dirt problem. So I think there was probably two, twofold, and I just kind of like to put it on the record that there is a problem over there. And I, you know, I, I talked to Tim Lee on the other side on the industrial park, and he says some days it's horrible.
Yeah.
Something's got.
What I'll do, I'll, I'll talk with the, uh, the zoning enforcement and also the fire marshal, who is very involved in the permitting process there, and we'll, we'll look at the permits and see if that change in, um, activity is addressed.
Okay.
Uh, and how it's addressed, and if it's not, we will, we'll try to address it.
And it might, it might be getting less now because the leaves are on the trees, you know? I, I don't know if the dust ever gets to Rosemont, or, you know, we got John Winthrop Middle School, which of course there's nothing going on there now, but, um, so.
No, we're, we're in a dry patch right now, and people don't think about it, but I think we're very close to drought conditions.
Yeah.
Already, and we're really not even coming into this summer yet, so.
Yeah, so I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, listening, and we'll put that on if we can.
Good. Um, the big announcement really from, from this office and.
Yeah.
Worst announcement that I could imagine making, uh, someone dying is that, that, you know, you guys were at the meeting and the health district was at the meeting, and Parks and Rec was at the meeting, and, and we, we met today with the Deep River Ancient muster committee about, um, about holding the muster. They, they need to make a decision by June first, uh, so we, we rescheduled the meeting. We met a couple of weeks ago, uh, we met again today, and, uh, and have canceled this year's muster. There's, there's no way, given the, uh, given the law that Connecticut is operating right now, that we can hold that muster and keep the, the amount of people limited to, to what the state is allowing for. And, and also, um, the big concern was just to have, to have a, a safe muster. There was a story, you guys heard the story about the muster out in Washington State that turned into a near riot. So many people came, uh, more than what they ever had before and anticipated. And I think there was also a story about a muster that was held down in Carol, one of the Carolinas.
Race.
Yeah, similar event, so, um, you know, it's, we're all saddened by, by that, and it's, it's a horrible change for this summer. It's just another blow to the events, to the activities taking place in Deep River this summer. But it was, everyone in the room, if you can call these Zoom meetings, uh, room, was, uh, was of the same mind that we just can't, could not pull this off in a way that was safe and followed the letter of the law. I think we all, uh, at the end vowed to make next year's muster just that much better.
Yep.
Yep. But we'll, you know, try to get that announcement out. Again, it's one of those decisions I don't think anybody was happy about. It was a decision that had to be made.
Yeah.
So.
Unfortunate, but true.
Yep.
Public safety number one.
Yep.
Well, between the muster and the Winthrop Parade and the Deep River Parade, a lot of that Winthrop Parade was a, you know, and, and we, there's certain things you can do and certain things you can't do, and you gotta, like Dwayne says, public safety, and that's, that's all that matters.
No, that's, that's the first and foremost what our job is, is public safety, so. If there's nothing else, that's, that's it for me. So we can, uh.
That's it.
Get a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all.
All right. See you in a bit.
Let us call the May meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance into session.
Yay.
First item on our agenda, keeping with tradition, would be the approval of the minutes from Laurie. Which, how many meetings do you want us to approve?
Three. We have the regular meeting minutes of April 28th and the special meeting minutes from May 7th and May 18th.
All right.
I'll, I'll move to approve those minutes.
I second.
Second. Wish to discuss them? Or should we move to the vote? All those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, it's passed. Good. Uh, next item on our agenda would be, um, uh, the treasurer's report. Tommy, can you, uh, lead us through?
Sure.
Conversation with Angus before, so keep it going.
Yeah, uh, actually, did everyone receive the five twenty-six, uh, deposit accounts?
Yes.
Kathy was supposed to send it to you. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. So let's just.
Kathy sent us a lot of emails today, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's just go over a few things. Uh, we're, we're going to stick right now to the general fund, uh, accounts. We're actually, if we compare last month to, uh, this month, we're actually, uh, just under seventy-three thousand dollars more than what we had, uh, the end of, uh, last month of, uh, four twenty-seven. So we're, uh, doing quite well. And that's really because the, uh, on, on April 30th, we received the, um, education cost sharing monies of eighty, eighty, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. I made one transfer, um, this past month. That was actually for two million five hundred thousand from People's United Bank to Liberty Bank. Uh, I'm transitioning a change, uh, because we're only getting point two oh percent interest on our money market account. Liberty Bank has what they call a municipal sweep account, uh, that can pay us, uh, point, uh, four or five percent. So we get twenty-five basis points more. So I, I decided, uh, decided to do that. I still have some money in the People's United account, but, um, now Liberty has two million five hundred thousand dollars that, uh, we'll be using, uh, primarily like we did with, uh, People's United and making transfers when we need monies into the general fund. Also with Liberty Bank, you'll see that special account that we had, the rate was two point three five percent. That matured on four thirty. Uh, the new rate is, uh, one point one oh percent, but certainly a lot higher than, um, anything else out there right, right now. I also did, I, I sent a letter, emailed a letter on, uh, May 20th to Michael, Michael Kegler, uh, Government Banking, uh, BP at, um, People's United, because I'm closing out, or I have closed out the capital non-recurring fund. And I have transferred, or the monies are going to be transferred over to Liberty Bank. Uh, again, the rate will be from point two oh to point four or five percent. You'll see that there, the balance of three, three hundred and seventeen thousand eight eighteen ninety-five is still under, um, People's United. The reason for that, when I called today, um, they, uh, have closed out that account. Uh, they're sending a check to, rather than us, and I wanted to, you know, transfer the monies, uh, wire it, but they said they will, uh, they would send the check to the town of Deep River. So, um, we have an account opened at Liberty. It's just not funded right now. Uh, as soon as we get that check and hopefully it's going to be, uh, if they've closed it out, it's got to be on its way. So as soon as I get that check, I'll be putting that into the Liberty Bank account. So that's kind of where we are and it's some changes that, uh, that I've made. I did speak to Kathy Calambak today. Uh, there will be no transfers needed, um, this week. Uh, she said we'll probably need a transfer of five hundred thousand dollars next week and primarily to cover the, uh, the regional or the, the school, the school, uh, payment that we have, we have to make. One, we do have one payment coming up that says the, uh, Kirtland, Kirtland Street, River Street Sewer, uh, Project Expansion, uh, where we, um, we have, uh, through the USDA, uh, US Department of Agriculture, um, it's a, it was a forty-year note for six hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, that was taken out June 23rd, two thousand seventeen for forty years at two point two five oh percent. So we have a payment, principal and interest payment of twenty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars that, uh, will be made on June 23rd. It's a pre-authorization that they take right out of our Citizens, um, Bank General Fund account. So once that payment is, actually that payment is made up of ten thousand one forty-one thirty-five in principal and twelve thousand nine fifty-seven sixty-five in interest. And once we pay that payment on June 23rd, our balance will be at five hundred and seventy-five thousand eight ninety-five thirty-five. If you look at the bottom of the report, uh, we are, uh, right now, let's see, we've about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars more, we have more, um, than we did last year at this time. So when I talked to Angus, um, we're very liquid right now and, and like I wanted to talk to Kathy just to see as far as transfers and whatever. So we're good for, you know, pretty much, you know, a couple of weeks. I mean, we have, uh, again, in our general fund accounts over four million dollars. And we should be getting, you know, some, uh, hopefully a lot of, uh, tax revenue monies that will be coming in soon. So personally, I think we're in, in good shape right now. You know, I was supposed to, I wanted to talk to Angus about that, uh, getting that special note if we need it, uh, to, you know, to, to fund, uh, some of our expenses. Um, I don't think we'll need it, but, uh, you know, to have it, uh, or at least to authorize us to, to do it if we need it, great. But, uh, I think we're in good shape.
Tom, do you mind me offering a, um, a pushback on some of that enthusiasm? I don't mean to take it off the table, but I'd like to.
Okay.
A little bit. It goes as follows. We've got four million dollars. My rule of thumb, we spend a million and a half a month. And we spend more during this time of year because we've got road crews, we're doing projects. I think that conceptually, if you take my broad, broad brush, that puts you at the end of June at about two million dollars in town funds. And who knows what the mystery's going to happen in July. I guess I just.
Yeah, we don't know. Yeah, that's right. You're right.
Just testing that, uh, the discussion we are going to have in a few minutes is a very valid discussion, so that's all.
But that's why I'm, I'm, I'm saying that I think we should, you know, go ahead and get the, the okay to, uh, if we need the funding, that we have it, uh, in place. That's, uh, but if we don't need it, so be it. I mean, you know, it's not going to cost the town any money if we, if we go that route until we actually activate, activate the account or we have, if we have to. You know, it's, who knows? Who knows how people are going to be paying their, their taxes? I mean, they do have that ninety-day, uh, deferral, uh. I'm going to pay mine. Hopefully, hopefully we'll be, you know, hopefully we'll still get a, a good, uh, a flow of, of money coming in.
Um, just for clarification, the capital non-recurring fund, which you have identified in gray, and it's three hundred seventeen eight one eight nine five, is that our capital? Is that how much money we have set aside to fund capital? Can I take that dollar amount as, as what's in our capital fund? I didn't think.
Well, you know, that's, that, that's the account that we report every, every single month. If, you know, we need it for any particular capital plan, we do have that money, that money in place.
That's good. I thought the number was low. Good. It's an excellent number. All right. Well done.
And we're just going to get a little bit, you know, like I said, we'll double our interest, not that it's a great, but, uh, we'll get twenty-five basis points more than we're getting now, so. And I like dealing with a, a local bank too, which, uh, no offense to People's United, but. We'll stop, we'll stop there.
Can I ask a question of Tom?
Sure.
It's a Tom discretion. Go ahead. Yes.
Tom, uh, the, somebody asked me the other day on the ninety-three thousand dollars in the, uh, what, what's shown as the memorial fund or the community fund. Should we take that, some of that money and put it in some sort of interest-bearing account or is that sort of a waste of time?
Well, you know, between you and I, Russ, um, rates are so low.
I think, I think everybody else is going to listen, but go ahead.
You know, be quite honest, uh, you know, rates, rates are really so low right now that, um, it's just going to be minimal, to be quite honest with you. Uh, I don't know how fast.
What about if we waited a while and, you know, a, a while ago I was able to get almost a two percent on a, on a CD?
How much?
If they came back to that sort of level, would it be worth it?
Two percent?
Well. You know, it's funny because when I talk to, you know, People's United, that point two oh rate, that, that probably is not going to go anywhere. It's not going to go up, uh, probably won't come down any further than it is. So it's just, so you're not going to find a lot of, you know, good rates out there. And so we're not going to get a lot of interest. I mean, you know, it has, it's a sizable account, ninety-three thousand. I'd be glad to, you know, go out there and see what, what we have for rates. But having said that, uh, I mean, how liquid do you want the monies to be? I mean, do you want to, do you want to put it into an account that like a, uh, like a CD type thing where, you know, it's, uh, going to get a return for a certain length of time? Or do you want something in like a money market account where you have access to it and the monies are liquid all the time? How, you know, how fast are you going to be using, using those monies?
It, it seems like the more we take out, the more that goes in. It's, it's amazing because the people in Deep River are, are so generous to that account, to that fund. Um, and we spent a ton of money lately.
If you put, if you put it into a CD, you can't add on to a CD. If you put it into a money market account, you can, when you get donations, you can actually put the money in there. It's, it's, uh, totally liquid. You can take it out anytime you want. And you can, like I said, you can make deposits into that account. So that would probably be the route that I would look into as far as rates. I mean, certainly I could check, you know, check with a couple of banks to see, uh, certainly you're not going to get much with citizens. I can guarantee that.
I, I'm, I'm very willing to wait a while and see if rates go up at all at, at some point and.
I don't see, yeah, I don't see that happening for a while.
Anyway, so, um, you know, we can wait as long as we need to wait.
Okay. I mean, I could talk to Liberty too and see what, I mean, we're getting point four or five percent. That's not bad. So, um, I, I know, it's not the greatest, but, but there we are.
I, I agree.
We can be in touch with each other and decide what, uh, what you think we want to, should do in that case.
Okay. All good. Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit of interest earned is a little bit of interest earned.
Seems, uh, interest is interest.
It will be a little bit of, it will be a little bit of interest earned.
But it's better than putting it in a mattress. Bud, we pass by audience of citizens?
Audience, thank you. I forgot that, uh, there are other in the world that are on our Zoom. Do we have any audience, do we have any citizens who would like to, uh, share their thoughts with the Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen? Angus, if you see anybody, um.
No, there's nobody here but us chickens. Um, we have this newspaper reporter in the, uh, Valley Church Communications.
Okay, I just want to make sure I cover the bases.
No, you have done fine to remind us and, uh, Angus says, uh, who, who sang Everybody Here But Us Chickens? Uh, the Mills Brothers.
The Mills sisters.
One of the songs that Russell had in his, uh, repertoire. Um, all right, with that, with that, uh, audience citizen, uh, addressed, I'd like to move to, uh, request by the, uh, tax collector to move, uh, some dollars to, um, what did she call it? A surplus or, um?
From the, um, let me get to that, that.
Yes.
To the suspense list.
Suspense list, that's the word I was looking for. A note, she wrote a note with more detail. I wrote to a summary reminding you, reminding you that this is something we do annually. Does, uh, anyone wish to discuss it? Does anyone, uh, have curiosities?
Um, I did forward that to everyone. Um, the accounts include seven thousand sixty-one and change for motor vehicle taxes on the grand list two thousand fifteen, one thousand two hundred ninety-three twenty-five in supplemental motor vehicle taxes on the grand list two thousand fifteen and eleven thousand two hundred seventy-five thirty-three in personal property taxes. They're uncollected, but they, they're still pursuing them. These are not forgotten.
That is correct. They just, we just removed them from, uh, receivable on our accounting records, which, uh, if anyone looks at our accounting records and anticipates future cash flows, they would not include these in. But these numbers are all currently with our, um, what do you call it? Somebody collected or what do you got? A, uh, a bill collector or, uh, something. Uh, actually the name is right here. They are currently with our. Uh, yes, good. So they are, so anyhow, uh, would anyone be willing to give me a resolution to accept the numbers read by Laurie and indicated on the tax collector's memo to us, uh, to move them to suspense?
Do you need a motion or a resolution?
Motion.
Motion.
Ah, I mean a motion, correct.
Just a motion. Every year we do a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the nineteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents to the suspense list.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Thank you.
With that homework done, um, I'm going to ask Angus to, uh, I'll ask for selectman recommendations, but, uh, I have an idea what they are. Angus, you want to take it from here?
Yes, um, I sent to you and Laurie. I'm not sure if you were able to distribute it around to the whole board.
I think Laurie did.
Or not, but, um, I sent you a resolution. The Board of Selectmen earlier today, um, adopted this resolution, um, that is authorizing the issuance of a tax anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed four million dollars to pay the town's expenses and obligations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Um, the important thing to remember is that this is not an authorization for us to go borrow the money. This is an authorization for the first step. If the Board of Selectmen has adopted it, if you will adopt the authorization or the, um, resolution put in front of you, the Board of Selectmen will, um, will set a, uh, a time, a time for a town meeting. I think at the Board of Selectmen meeting, we spoke about immediately following the first, um, Board of Selectmen meeting in July. That will have a different resolution which will authorize us, which will authorize, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Treasurer to, um, to borrow the money as needed. And that's the important part of this to, to remember. You know, Tom was, Tom was correct. We are doing well right now this year. I think we've, we've stuck to our budget and we're doing what we're supposed to do. But all of the things that we talked about in the last month of preparing our budget are still, still in play. We have an unknown amount of time or an unknown impact on what, what this virus is going to do to the state and to the local revenue, uh, sources. You know, and to Bud's point, we collect approximately fifty percent of our revenue in July and August. And we spend over one-third of our budget before the end of September. So, um, we have a real cat, that's a real, that is when the cash flows the most. And we have a chance that our collections may not be where, where we need them to be. The idea for this is not to borrow. It's to be ready to borrow if we need it. And I think it's, you know, we're not, we're not anywhere near alone in this. Many, many towns across the state are considering this. And, uh, and, and the important thing to remember too is this does not increase our spending abilities or, or even our interest in spending any more money. It really just makes sure that we are able to, uh, to meet our obligations when they come to us. It has to be, whatever we borrow has to be repaid before the end of the fiscal year next year. The 2021 fiscal year will be, whatever we borrow will be paid back by. The 2021 fiscal year will be, whatever we borrow will be paid back by our taxes that we are able to collect. So I'm asking you guys to consider adopting the resolution and then the Board of Selectmen at our next meeting will set a town meeting and get ourselves ready to go. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
No, we've kind of, we've gotta beat this to death before. We need the money. If we need the money, we gotta, it's gotta be there. We've all gotta pay our bills, so.
Your chairman of our, of your commission is gone.
Blue to coop.
Bud, Bud wants nothing to do with this conversation, which I know is not accurate, but.
He left us?
Yeah, he got bounced. I don't know.
He must have lost his connection somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, Angus, what's the, what's the exact amount of the tax anticipation note that you were contemplating?
We're authorizing not to exceed 4 million.
4 million? Okay, so that's about almost three months of operating expenses, approximately?
Yeah, not quite three months, yeah.
Okay.
Approximately. We, we, we average it at about a million and a half a month, but that's not an accurate representation because we, we do spend more money in the first three months of the year than we do.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I mean, that seems like a prudent amount in view of the uncertainty of the revenue stream, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
One question I have. One question I have Angus is because so much of the budget is front loaded or so many of the payments are front loaded. For instance, maybe some department has, you know, $5,000 to spend for the year, but it's spent it all on July 2nd or July 10th or something. And there's a terrible of those. And that's why the, we spend so much more in those first three months, I think, than, than any other time. In light of that, is 4 million enough to get us through those first three months? And knowing that some people will pay their taxes in that July 1 to August 1 timeframe that they always would pay them anyway? Are you, are you confident with that number?
Well, I'm comfortable with the number. Am I confident in a, in a, in something that we're anticipating and, and we're anticipating happening but hoping doesn't? As confident as you can be, but I am comfortable with the number. Combined with our reserve fund, I, I think, you know, we, we should be, it should be enough. I don't wanna, I don't wanna come close to borrowing, you know, our budget or anything like that. I think, I think it's a, I think it's a good conservative number to, to get us through any troubles that we have in the first three months.
And what would happen if, if it weren't enough? Let's say we missed by 500,000. No, I, I.
No, I know, I know. We had a.
Did you go back for more? Or is, is once you borrow, is that sort of the end of the road?
No, if we, I was smiling because Lori asked a very similar question at the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, the, I wasn't smiling at the question at all. It's a serious question and it's a serious concern. My, if, if we find that we don't have, that we did not borrow enough, that we are actually out of money or are going to be out of money, we would have to arrange for another, another loan. And that, that would not be, I don't believe that it would be able to be a tax anticipation note unless we're able to document that the only reason that we're out of money is because we're not, we're, obviously have not collected our taxes. If, if something like the, if the state decided to cut back on some of their ECS money, that would have to, in order to cover that, we would have to find a different avenue than a tax anticipation note, because that.
Yeah, those are two different things. Of paying their taxes late and then something happening at a state level, there's, they're two different animals. I understand that.
That's right.
And that kind of worries me, like you just said about the, you know, the C, ECS monies. Deep River does very well compared to our neighboring towns.
Yes, we do.
That would be a real kick in the face if they, if they, you know, dropped significantly the amount that we've been getting.
Yeah, no, that, that has been a concern of mine since I became involved in the Board of Selectmen, you know, those years ago. That's, that's a lot of money, a big part of our budget. And it is, it is very much appreciated, but it also is, it leaves us pretty dependent on state.
You know, it's, it's a, it's such a conglomeration of variables that are conditioning this tax anticipation, this borrowing. If, if, depending on who you're listening to in the news, we get a resurgence of all of this again in the fall, come winter, that, and you're anticipating paying this note back in 2021? And we have to continue borrowing because we're losing money from the state or people are still not back to full-time employment? So taxes aren't being paid, you know, all the things are impinging on what, what do we do? How, how do we handle the lack of money to run our town?
That's, those are the questions that we have. I don't, I don't think it's prudent for us to get too far ahead of ourselves and anticipate what's going to happen. Our, we collect the better part of our taxes in, in July and August and we'll go from that. If we find, if we find in the winter that the state is shut down again, then we will. And we find, and we find, we'll have to find another, another alternative to how we can, how we can fund, you know.
Yeah, the thing is too with our research, we don't have a lot in reserve, even though we've been building up our reserves. We don't have a lot.
No, that's, that's my concern. We don't have enough to make it three months.
No.
Oh, you got about four or five weeks, probably five weeks on a, on a bad one.
So we'll get through whatever gets in front of us. This is just really the first step in, in, in preparing. If we, if the state gets shut down again in, in, in the fall, I, I don't know. I, I would guess that we'll have to, we'll look at our budget and see what we can stop spending.
Right.
And one of the, one of the, one of the real problems is because you don't know. It sounds funny, but you don't know what you don't know and you can't anticipate doing things on what ifs. And you can only do them when they come down, when they're down the road close enough to see. Because when they're too far down the road and you can't anticipate these things, you can't really do anything about them.
Right, you just deal with high levels of anxiety.
Yes, that's right. But, you know, Russ, you, you're making me smile a lot tonight. It was, you're, you were very close to the Donald Rumpstall quote about the known unknowns and unknown unknowns. We just, there's no way for us to, to know what's going to happen when it comes to that. So we do our best to anticipate as much as we can and, and prepare for it. And that, that's, that's what we're doing now. And that's what this, that's what this is. This is not, it's not a blank check for us to just go out and spend. It's, it's really, here comes Bud again. Great. It's really just the authorization to make the decision that if we need to, we can continue to operate.
Good.
Seems like you're trying to steer a middle course here, you know, I mean, because to your point, there's all the known, known unknowns, known unknowns, unknown unknowns. And you can't, you know, we don't know where we're gonna be in November. But I think, you know, where we are in May of right now, it makes sense to do this and then see how it plays out.
Right. Thank you. That's right where we are.
If we have to borrow this money, do we have to borrow it all or do we just borrow parts of it?
No, we can borrow it as needed.
So the figure is kind of academic then, isn't it?
Well, I, I like having a not to exceed number on there.
All right.
Was that set up like a line of credit? So you can just take advances as you need it?
Yes, that, that's the way it was explained. It was not.
So you don't, we don't take, we don't take $4 million upfront? It would be based on how we, how we need the monies and we would just take.
I, I would suggest that if we find in August that, that we are way behind, that you, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen get together and have a conversation about what we think we should need. And we get invited tax collector in there too and say, you know, what's happening, where are we? And, and get an idea of what we, what we would need for, for the next month or something.
If it's set up, if it's set up that way as a line of credit, well, you're only gonna be paying on what you use. If we had to take the full $4 million upfront, then we have to pay interest on that full $4 million. On the line of credit, you're just gonna be paying based on what you've used. So, you know, that's, that's the approach I like.
Yeah.
Do we know what the interest rate will be and which bank we're using?
Right now, we're speaking with Dime Bank. And the interest rate that was, that was discussed was 2.25 or 2.5. I can't remember exactly which. But, you know, it's too soon. We're not, they're not gonna lock us in for three months. We don't know. They're gonna, we'll, we'll talk about that more. I don't anticipate interest rates going up anytime soon, but I don't know.
I agree.
So I have one last question Angus, if I may. You and the Board of Selectmen have passed that resolution now or you're going to?
We passed that resolution earlier tonight.
And, and you're asking us to pass that same resolution?
You pass the resolution that's written that you, for the Board of Finance to pass, then we will, at our next meeting, we will set a date for a town meeting.
Do you have the actual resolution, Angus?
Yes. It's, it's quite long, Tom, at the Board of Selectmen meeting. I read just the first paragraph and we'll include it in the minutes, but I will send it, I'll send you a copy.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thanks. It's for a line of credit though? That's, that's the authorization?
That's what this, what the authorization that you're doing today is that you agree, basically says you agree with the concept and we will move to a town meet, move this resolution to a town meeting. It's not a, it's not, I don't wanna call it a line of credit, even though it is very similar to a line of credit. It, it's, it's a borrow that is guaranteed by our, our taxes. It's not, it's not something that's budgeted for or anything like that. It's, it's our, it's guaranteed by our taxes.
Okay.
By calling it the tax anticipation note, it's very literal of what it is.
No, understood, understood on that part, but mechanistically how it operates at the bank, that's, that's open in other ways.
Yep.
Okay. That, that, that's what I was getting at. Yep. Thank you.
So we make a resolution or do you have one that you're gonna read and we just?
Lori's got it. I would suggest that you do the same thing that we did. It's two pages worth of language, but, you know, we, we include the entire, I would suggest in, in the Board of Selectmen, we are going to include the entire resolution in our minutes, but only read in the first paragraph.
Yeah, I have the first paragraph of resolution authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed 4 million to pay the town's expenses and obligations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. And yeah, I am going to include the whole, whole body in there.
So.
The only thing is like, if this has to go to a town meeting, there could be questions as to how this is going to be paid and, and, you know, and, and advance if, if, if it's gonna be, we can take advances or is it gonna be the full 4 million that we have to take? So I think that has to really be clarified before it goes to the town meeting, what, you know, how this, how this note is gonna be set up.
Well, it will be, well, why don't we, you and I can have a conversation with Dime Bank and with Bruce Chudwick.
Yeah, just in case, you know, questions are being, are gonna be asked at, at a town meeting.
Questions will, there's no question that questions will be asked and they should be asked, you know?
Yeah, right.
And we can explain them. I, I can't explain the technicality of how this is going to be set up, but it is, it is a loan that, that is, that is paid back before the end of the next fiscal year or before the end of the fiscal year that it's taken out in, which is 2021. It, it should not impact our budget at all, you know, those are questions that, that should be asked and we, I'll repeat them again tonight. It's not an increase in our spending. It is simply an opportunity for us to ensure that we can meet the obligations that we've already agreed by, by our budget. It's not increasing our budget by any, any substantial number whatsoever, except for, other than interest payments.
Interest payments, yeah. Is there any, any chance that the interest payment would be lower on this initial loan than it would be on a subsequent loan if we need more later on? Or is that too wild a guess?
I'm not sure.
Say 4 million is not enough?
If 4 million is not enough, then we will have to find another way to fund, to fund ourselves.
And chances are the interest rate, the interest on that could be higher.
Chances are, yeah.
My, I'm thinking we should go for five and not four if this, we're not only paying what we take.
Well, that's, that's a conversation. I, I don't, I, I, I understand that and I appreciate the concern. But I, I don't, I'm with, well, I guess I just don't, I don't think that we're going to be in as bad a shape as that. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna land a little bit short in the first three months. I'm hopeful that we're not short enough to where we need to do this at all. But, you know, there's no way to know. And I, I don't, I, I think I picked, I chose the number of 4 million based on our budget and the percentage that, that is in our budget and how much we would spend in those, in those three months that I was talking about, you know, before the end of September. But, you know, if you wanna go for five.
Well, it's only because of the upfront money that we spent. That's the only reason I would even suggest that.
Yep. That's up to you guys. The Board of Selectmen already, already went with 4 million. And we could revise that if we need, if you guys decide otherwise.
If you feel fairly comfortable with it, I'll feel comfortable with it.
I'm as comfortable as you can be in a situation like this. I think it's the right amount.
All right.
Given, given where we are.
So what do we do now?
So we need a motion. Wait a minute, hold on, is that Bud again?
You should be able to speak, Bud.
No, he can't speak.
No. Not muted.
Okay, well, he says he can't speak. So as long as he can hear me and he can send me notes and I'll hold them up. He does it. So we do need a motion for, to approve the resolution in its entirety. I did send that to everyone and it will be included. And it, it starts, as I read before, the resolution authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed 4 million to pay the town's expenses and obligations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020.
Hey Bud, call me and see if we can, if your voice over my phone would be helpful.
Bud, can you do that? Bud, you, can you talk on mic?
He's gonna do that. It's, I can read his lips.
You don't wanna hear it, Kevin?
I, I will, I will make a, for the safety of the town and for the safety of the budget, really. I'm gonna make a motion to approve that resolution in the amount of $4 million, up to.
I'll second that, Russ.
Let me just get those names in.
Not sure how that's gonna work, Bud.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion moved. Okay. Angus, did you have anything else?
I don't know.
All right, the list is correspondence. We have none new. Has anybody else received any correspondence? Nothing new came through to the Board of. Has anybody else received any correspondence? Nothing new came through to the Board of Finance email. No one else had anything? Okay. On to the monthly budget report, which we didn't receive until, well, I didn't get it until I got home from work tonight, so I have not really had a good chance to look at it.
Uh, who, somebody's feeding back.
Yeah, that's me with Bud's phone.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sorry. I know, I know you're having trouble with it. Are we going to start with expenses or with income?
Well, we typically start with revenue. I'm just trying to get into my email so I can find revenues. Bud, or Angus, was there anything in particular? It's the end of year, anything in particular that we should be aware of, that you're aware of?
Oh, in revenues, no. I think we're in good shape. We've got, you know, collecting as, as we would expect. Police are higher than we would expect. You know, miscellaneous revenue, we're, we're in good shape as far as money's coming in, as Tom indicated earlier.
We only have, we have 3% outstanding right now, which is, you know, at the end of May, that's probably not very much.
Right.
Do you know if we're expecting any more from Pequot?
Uh, no, I don't, no. I, I would, we haven't been told that we're not going to give any of the monies that we, that we promised. May, may not have just, may not have received it yet.
Isn't that based on their revenues? What percentage that the towns would receive? And in this particular case, that, you know, they have, they've been closed for, you know.
That's my understanding of it. But you know, that, that fund has dropped so much anyway. I think, what do we get? Let's.
We just got a pretty good sum from, from them, you know.
Yeah.
A thousand dollars or whatever, but that's gone way down.
I think we're talking to the dogs.
Sorry about that.
I'm just texting Bud a call-in number that he can call and listen and speak over the telephone, not, he can't speak over his, he'll just be connected twice, once visually and once.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah, we can still see him.
Thank, thank God.
Quiet.
So that said aside, how about expenditures, expenses?
Yeah, our building inspector went over. I don't know what that's, quite why that is at this point. He did, I will say though, that he did a terrific job helping us get, get our restaurants and communicating with our restaurants to get in shops to get open.
So, could be a big part of that. Do we have any new building going in or any new projects?
We, we do have a lot of projects coming through. So he has been busy. But I, I, I know he's getting closer and better, better every year at staying within his budget, but he's just, you know, we budget based on the number that he gives us.
Right.
Over it every year.
Well, I know frequently the discussion is that he'll receive the fees for applications, but his time may not be in the same fiscal year that he puts out.
Right.
So, it's always an issue.
Yeah. No, everything else is, there's nothing that jumped out at me, but like, just like you, I looked at it pretty quickly. I didn't get it until this afternoon.
I opened revenues and got sidetracked.
There's not a lot of negative numbers here.
No, I think we're, I think we're about where we should be. You know, we should have about, you know, eight, or eight, between eight and 10% should be what's left.
Angus, I don't know, I have a question and I don't know whether you'll be able to answer it or not. The Park and Rec had to close down a lot of their programs because of the pandemic.
Yep.
I, I, I don't know if you know how badly that affected them or not.
It didn't, they, they pretty much finished their basketball program, which is one of their, I don't want to call it a revenue, but that's, you know, they, they make some money off of that. Right now, I had a long meeting this morning with the Health Department and with Carol about camps. And we are able to run our camps. And we have campers that, not campers, but counselors that, that are excited to come back and work, work those camps. We have to, you know, do things a little differently, but, but we will run the camps and that, you know, it won't be bus trips to anywhere. They'll be, they'll be here in town, but I think they're going to be okay. They're, they're, as far as financially, they're not, you know, as far as programs that have been lost, yeah, we lost our, our carnival is out, muster's out now. That's not Park and Rec, but.
They had the road, they had the road race and, and Deep River Day too, so that's probably out too, right?
That's, I would guess that that's, well, carnival, yeah, that's, that's on Family Day and that's, you know, we're trying to communicate with the Merchants Association about what they want to do with that. It's probably going to be toned down, that's for sure. Things like the road race, I don't know how we could do that safely, but we could probably, you know, if we got rid of the bouncy house, continue with the, with the rest of, the rest of it or some facsimile of, of the Family Day. But I, I think the road race will probably be discussed.
You made a statement earlier that muster's out. Is that, has that been decided?
Yep, that was decided this afternoon, yeah.
Okay.
That was decided in, in, you know, with the Ancient Muster Committee. We, we all met this afternoon and had a, had a conversation. They needed to have a decision by June 1st in order for them to, to go forward.
How much of a savings does that mean to the town for no muster? Is it minimal?
Yeah, it's, the police line on that is 13,000. But it will also, you know, there are very intangibles, you know, I don't know, some of the shops have, you know, bang, bang up weekends, you know, there's a lot of people coming into town. But it's impossible to, I, I don't know the number other than that 13,000. I can't gauge what the, what the businesses will suffer or not. I know that there are a lot of people in this town that, that really like it. People come from all over the world. It's the biggest muster in the world.
But, you know, not, not to be disgusting here, but you don't have to rent the porta potties either.
No, that, 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 that is that part of that, that's part of that 13,000.
You beat me to it, Russ.
Well, you know, savings is savings.
No, that's, that's right.
Lori told me that earlier.
I'm in trouble.
So I don't, you know, as far as revenues go, I think we're, I think we're, we're good. Bud and I will, I'm sure, begin a project in earnest now to try and anticipate what we're going to have for surplus at the end of the year.
Anyone else see anything else in revenues or expenditures? Okay. Um, there is nothing else on the agenda. Bud, do you have, can you hold up a piece of paper saying if there's anything else? Okay, Bud is saying goodbye. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, let me flip flop that around in here. Hold on just a second. Sorry, doing two things at once. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Wonderful, okay. We'll tap dance through those later. Thank you.
Good night everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
See you all night.
Bye everybody.
Maybe you don't have to meet.